We're gonna start the February thirteenth. Town Council Committee of the whole meeting to order. We will do roll call, I believe. Everybody is present except for. Councillor Merritt, is that correct?
And McBride is excused.
And McBride is excused, we have Bordelon, Gajewski, Jones. McBride is not here. Councillor Merritt is not here, Parker is in attendance, Pacino as well as Rusk. Okay, so we'll start the meeting, call the order. Roll call, calendar and communications. Uh, we will start with councillor Bordelon. Councillor Bordelon, you're on mute. Councillor Bordelon, can you hear us or are you having technical difficulties? Okay, we'll move on to councillor Pacino. You're on mute.
I don't have any communications to pass today.
All right, thank you, how about councillor Rusk?
Good evening, um, so I attended the Board of Ed presentation last night. Um, with a lot of people, councillor Pacino, councillor Jones, Mayor Franco. Councillor Parker and councillor Bordelon. Um, and I received a number of emails including support for. Keeping SB Butler. A park. So that's what I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, and then councillor Jones.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I also attended the Board of Ed. A meeting with councillor Rusk and many the other ones, other councillors here. Uh, on Saturday, I attended the Thrive fifty-five Super Bowl. Um, a big thank you to all the sponsors for the raffles and for all the restaurants and locations that supplied. Uh, all the delicious, delicious soups, it was very well attended and people had a lot of, a lot of fun, a lot of good cookies that were there. Um, I also attended this afternoon, the swearing in of our new town clerk, Marisol Melendez, and congratulations to her and. It was a very nice ceremony. Uh, Mayor Franco did the swearing in, it was a, was a nice thing. Um, and then also just had various emails and communications, thank you.
Mayor, uh, councillor Bordelon had been knocked off, she's now back in.
Okay, thank you. Um. Let's see councillor Jones, councillor, we have councillor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh. I also attended the Super Bowl with councillor Jones, councillor Russ, councillor Parker and yourself, the mayor. Uh, and also I had spoken with the town manager, uh, last week, I was appointed and approved to be the Performing Arts Commission Chair. And we are, uh, going to be seeking, uh, applications, uh, for members to join that. Uh, we're gonna let the, uh, town clerk get settled in for a couple of days and then we are going to, uh, start advertising that. And then also last night, I did not attend the council RTM Education Committee and Board of Ed, Board of Ed Budget Workshop. As after discussion with the town manager and town attorney, it was recommended that I recuse myself from deliberations on the Board of Education budget. Due to a family member's employment and thus giving me a familial financial interest. I will be recusing myself going forward from all Board of Ed budget discussions to ensure all taxpayer dollars are distributed with integrity and proper ethics. Thank you to the town manager and attorneys for their work. And that is all for me.
Okay, councillor Parker?
Good evening, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, good. We see various communications of regarding SB Butler and a couple of other items. Uh, and I also attended the Super Bowl, very well attended, thank you to Thrive fifty-five, the restaurants and all the volunteers. And the restaurants, it was a wonderful turnout. And that's all I have to report, thank you.
Okay, councillor Bordelon?
Uh, thank you, um. I attended the, uh, Board of Ed Budget, uh, this evening with the fellow councillors that were already named. I also attended the Black History Month Celebration on Friday at Fitch High School, um, with the middle school, um. As well as the jazz band and some of the various, uh, choral groups, um, it was pretty heavily attended and. They considered it their first annual, so they look to keep having it every year. Um, and it was, uh, very uplifting and, uh, exciting to be a part and, and, and experience, uh, the first annual. Um, I've received various communications regarding SB Butler. Um, the two properties that we're talking about tonight, concerns about the Board of Ed budget, uh, numbers. Um. Concerns about the TOPE and Property Use Committee. What else do I have here? Um. I think that's all I have actually, so that's it, um, and that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I, um, had many communications with residents, uh, regarding. Numerous different topics, uh. One of interest is of course the Board of Ed's budget. Um, as was stated, I swear on the town clerk today, uh. Town Clerk Melendez. Uh, attended the Super Bowl with my family and I thank all the other councillors who were able to go and, um. Volunteer their time and, uh. Help the Thrive fifty-five, serve the community, it was very nice to see you all there. Um. There, as was said, we had a joint meeting last night with the RTM and the Board of Ed to discuss the initial introduction of the Board of Ed budget. Which is currently at the superintendent's, uh, budget is eleven million dollar increase. Um, which people are very concerned about. And. Uh, councillors that were there were myself, Bordelon, Gajewski, Jones, Merritt, Parker, Pacino and Rusk. And also I would like to notate that, um. We have been invited to two meetings. One is a, uh, electric boat liaison. Government meeting with Ross Gianfratto. I might not be pronouncing that correctly. And I said I would announce tonight who would be there, um, being able to be in attendance and that will be on February nineteenth. And that'll be myself with councillor Parker, Rusk and Pacino. And then there's a meeting on February twenty-second, I will send further information on location, by the way. Um, February twenty-second with Erin McBride, who is from Senator Murphy's office, who would like to meet with representatives from Groton to discuss what, uh. Of interest Groton has, um, maybe on the federal level. And that would be myself along with councillor Jones, Bordelon and Pacino. So I will send out further information on that. Um, so that closes up calendar and communications. And we'll move on to approval of minutes, councillor Parker, would you like to approve the minutes? Or pass the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. And the committee of the whole special meeting minutes of January sixteenth and January thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, I still move.
Second, Jones?
I'm gonna go second with Pacino. All right, are there any comments? Councillor Gajewski?
Thank you, Mayor Franco, um, just to note on the special meeting for, um. January thirtieth, I was not there for adjournment, I left at the end of executive session. Uh, forgetting to adjourn the meeting, so I was not there for the adjournment vote, but it is marked that I did vote, but I was not there, I left at. Like it says. The meeting was adjourned at. Eight fifty-one, I probably left at eight forty-eight PM at the end of executive session.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I noticed also on the January sixteenth minutes. For the motion to postpone the discussion, it looks as though it has. Myself voting twice as a yes and an abstain. It was actually councillor Merritt who, um. I believe abstained. So just a notation. Um. All right, anything else, so we can move to, uh, pass the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think because we are on Zoom, I think we should do roll call vote. Um, just simply because I can't see people and I can't hear everybody at the same time, it's, it's very difficult. So, um.
Bordelon, aye.
All right, well, so Bordelon is yes. Um. And then Gajewski?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Pacino?
Aye.
And Rusk?
Aye.
And then myself as an aye, all right, pass this and. Seven to zero to zero. So moving on to our new business. Two zero two four dash one four zero landfill solar option agreement, councillor Gajewski, would you like to read the motion?
Yeah, let me just pull it up, uh. Boom, uh. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing town manager John Burt to sign an exclusive option agreement between the town of Groton. And Vert Raji LLC and all associated forms, affidavits and other documents necessary to submit a bid. In the upcoming ever-source shared clean energy facilities, SCEF program and ever-source non-residential renewable energy solutions, NRES. Program to install and operate and maintain a solar array on the closed Flanders Road landfill. And to associate eight, the town's beneficial electric accounts to Veraji LLC. Solar array in ever-source territory through virtual net metering, DNM, so moved.
Second.
Parker?
I have Gajewski seconded by Rusk. All right, and who do we have to discuss this topic with us today?
Greg will introduce it.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, uh, Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. Um, with me tonight, I have our clean energy consultants, I have Rob Clea from Clea Sustainability Associates and. Sam Zeichen from CSW Energy. Um, just before we get to the presentation, our consultants have put together, just a quick background. We met with, uh, Rob and Sam back at our November fourteenth cow. Uh, that was the previous council and, uh, the consensus was to give us the go-ahead to put out a. Request for proposal, an RFP for, uh, installing the solar array at the closed landfill on Flanders Road. Uh, we put that out in December and in January we received, uh. Proposals from seven different solar companies. Um. And Rob and Sam will get into, uh, who those companies were as we get into the presentation. But after review of all the proposals we received by the town and the consultants, you know, it was clear that Veragey offered the best, um. Value and, uh. Protected the town's interest of all the proposals received for, um, an option which is a five megawatt system on the landfill. Um. The, the, and we'll get into the next steps, but one thing we do need is the, um. The option agreement, which is, you know, what's, uh, the motion on the floor, uh, to have the town manager sign that. Uh, there was a draft of that option agreement in your packet, um. The town attorney and Veragey's attorney were still working out the fine details, we hope to have that wrapped up in the next week or so. Um, we are under a bit of a time constraint, um. In fact, we're gonna have to have a special, you know, if the council approves this tonight, a special town council meeting. Uh, at the next cow so that we can meet a March fourth, uh. Deadline for, uh, bid submissions in one of the programs. So, um, I'll turn it over to Rob and Sam, they can give a, a presentation on all the details and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you Greg and, and thank you, uh, mayor and town council members for having us, um, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes.
I don't have to be fine. Does he have?
Yes.
Can everyone see this okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, um, so thank you for having us, thank you for doing this virtually, um, Greg did an excellent job actually of introducing, uh, uh, me and Sam. So I wanna just jump right into our presentation for tonight. So our goal, um, this evening is to recap the RFP results and present to you our clear winner. Of the competitive RFP, which was Veragey LLC. They're a regional and national clean energy developer and they're based actually in West Hartford, Connecticut. We're also gonna explain the process for the town and Veragey to participate in those ever-source clean energy incentive programs, which unfortunately have those. Upcoming very tight deadlines, the March fourth deadline that Greg mentioned for one of the programs and a March fourteenth deadline for the other. And we'll get to the next steps for the town council, um, and talk about the entire development pro. Process if we are fortunate enough to win those competitive, um, ever-source incentives. So let's start with the RFP results. As Greg mentioned, we attracted seven bids from qualified regional and national solar developers, which is quite good for these types of RFPs. And with those seven bidders, they had twenty plus different scenarios for how to potentially develop solar at the landfill. And/or solar elsewhere in ever-source territory under the two different incentive programs, and I'm gonna try to make this as clear as mud, hopefully. Um, hopefully walk you through these different programs to your satisfaction, so you'll understand, um. How we're trying to maximize the potential financial benefits to the town. So we asked for the bidders to, in essence, present us with a number of different options for solar, both at the landfill. And if solar at the landfill in different sizes, kind of small, medium and large. And the potential for solar elsewhere in ever-source territory. Um, built by the developer but tied back to the town's beneficial accounts. Through this concept called virtual net metering, where the solar array can be anywhere and ever-source. And yet you receive bill credits on your, um, ever-source bills for that solar produced elsewhere. Um, so those are the, this, why there ended up being about twenty different scenarios we had to walk through from the different, um, developers. Now, I've mentioned and Greg has already mentioned, there are two primary clean energy incentive programs in the states that are. Run mostly by ever-source, though one of them is also co-run by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. They're both competitive blind bid auctions, so what that means is that through our RFP, we were. Finding a qualified solar developer to be our partner in those submissions to either. The NRES or the SCF programs, but our project will be competing with projects all across ever-source territory. Based pretty much solely on price, so they're a blind bid, you don't know what your competitors are bidding into those auctions. You just have an understanding of what the prior year's auctions, uh, had the results from those, so you can get a sense. Um, of, uh, the competitive competitiveness of your bid. Now, each of these two programs require certain documents. They're, they each have fairly similar sort of bid documents, um, at the beginning. They each require that the developer has control over the site on which they're gonna develop their solar. Um, and they have, um, a, that bid price which is, um, kept confidential. The only difference is that the NRES program, which with virtual, with virtual net metering. Also requires you to include in your bid package the list of those town ever-source. Electric accounts that are going to be associated with the solar array. So how do those? NRES and SCF bid processes work, this is where we're ultimately striving for with our, um, with your approval, obviously with our. Partner Veragey, so. All of those projects are submitted by the due date and. Um, March fourth for one of the program, March fourteenth for the other program. And then ever-source and/or Department of Energy and Environmental Protection takes those submitted projects. And make sure that all the right paperwork is in order, whether they qualify for the program. Then they go through that process of saying, okay, these are our pool of qualified projects, let's literally, they literally put them in an Excel spreadsheet. And they rank them according to the cheapest, lowest sort of dollar sort of bid. And they put them in that order and they have a certain amount of megawatts of total solar that they're going to, um. To select in, um, in the program and they sort of stop the line when they hit that, uh, amount. So the, the story here is that you wanna be above the line and in the sort of successfully, um, receive the incentive. Because these solar projects will not get built without, um, the incentive. So the, um, table below on this slide highlights that, um, the results from last year. And the takeaway message here that for both the NRES program and all the solar arrays we're contemplating are in the large category. And the SCF program. Roughly, um, you know, only half the bid submitted, um, win or half or less, so again, that demonstrates how competitive the program is. And the, um, winnings for bid prices fall into a range, now this is all publicly available information released. Just last month by the utilities, um, for the, for both programs. So this next slide gives you a sense, um, I'll get to it in a moment of the, um, financial benefit, which is one of the, the main criteria. On which we evaluated our, um, submissions into the RFP. But before I get to the financial part, I did wanna highlight that. All of those bidders with their twenty different sort of scenarios, we evaluated all of them on what their project, um. How the design was oriented, the components, the panels, the racks, the things they're using. Um, their project development timeline, the financial and technical capability of the bidders, their experience in landfill solar. Um, and are they budgeting for and anticipating contingencies and potential sort of costs of the different parts of the, um, solar array, which we'll get to that. Uh, in a moment, but of course, we also evaluated on the projected potential financial benefit to the town. Now we've removed the confidential details, uh, here, but you get a sense from the blue dots. That the Veragey selection at the far end was a, a clear sort of winner in terms of financial benefit to the town. What is not shown here is they're both providing a relatively high financial benefit. But they also presented confidentially their. Likely bid price into those competitive procurements and the bid price. likely bid price into those competitive procurements and the bid price was much more competitive than their closer rivals. So again, for it's always a balance of wanting to make sure that you're maximizing the benefit to the town, but not having a bid price that's so high that it would never win in those competitive NRES or SCF programs. And that's the delicate balance and Verage came away as a clear winner because they really struck that balance, the best of all the bids we received. Because we're selecting Verage, we wanted to give you a sense of what that or we're proposing the selection of Verage. We want to get you a sense of the twenty year estimated financial benefit and, and really I wanted to reiterate that these are approximate sort of benefits and we wanted to though just give you a sense. And Verage also presented a few different scenarios. We've highlighted two of them. Scenario A, where they would participate in both programs and provide the, the town benefits from the SCF, the SCF program through a twenty years of lease or pilot payments, payments in lieu of taxes. And a combination of that with another benefit from participating with the NRES program, which would be bill credits to the town on your ever source accounts. So they maximize the financial benefit by going into both programs and finding a way to have both participation. That's their scenario A. There is a simpler scenario B where they're only participating in one program. Though again, the benefits are slightly lower to the town in that scenario B. So in summary, on the financial side, the combined bids of using the SCF program and the NRES program is a pathway that allows the town to maximize the benefits and have a highly competitive bid in both programs. Plus, we wanted to note that the, the Verage proposal allocated a significant amount of funding for the potentially large cost to interconnect this solar array at the Flanders Road landfill into the grid in ever sourced territory. So for those of you who've been out to the landfill, it actually is at the very edge of the ever source service territory, which means that there's going to be potentially large costs involved with tying that solar rate back into the grid. So the power will actually flow appropriately. Verage was one of the strongest bids because they really took that into account, whereas some of their competitors in the bidding process were barely, you know, allocating any funds for those potentially significant costs. And that's a red flag for us in the review process that we didn't want to run the risk that if you selected that other bidder and they say, oh, now the costs are much higher, sorry, that would be would eat away at the potential find them financial benefits to the town. Finally, Verage had a very reasonable and appropriate schedule for permitting construction and they're a leading company in this field and doing similar projects in Connecticut. So all those things led to the selection of Verage as a, a clear winner. So next steps, and then I want to get to your questions, which I'm sure you'll, you'll have plenty. So this graphic gives you a sense of the the timeline of kind of where we are right now to tonight. We've gone through the RFP process and we're now at the stage where we're seeking your approval to go forward with the selection and the engagement through that option agreement to make sure we meet these really tight, unfortunately timelines for submitting the program documents by March fourth into the SCF program and by March fourteenth for the NRES program. Then we wait. Those are those competitive programs, the ever source and does their evaluation. We probably don't hear results until at least May. And then hopefully we win. So again, there's no guarantee. But if we are successful in obtaining those financial incentives, we then can enter into a long-term contract with Verage for the final design, the development, the construction, the long-term operations and maintenance. And those are the out into the future years. So we're asking question might be asking, we're asking first to have the town and Verage enter into this option agreement. And, and that's necessary at this early stage for two purposes. One, it establishes that Verage has site control. And in this case, it means they have the right and the ability to eventually build a solar array at the landfill, should they be awarded the incentive and then go through all the necessary town approval processes. And then second, that option agreement establishes that the town's electric accounts are going to be a tied to and sort of associated with a solar array that Verage is building elsewhere in, in ever sourced territory. And that's the unfortunate part of that March fourth deadline for the SCF program is that we have to ask you for the special town council meeting that Greg Hanover mentioned for your next committee of the whole meeting on February twenty seventh. Now, if the, and again, there's no guarantee, but if successful in the SCF and NRES program, the results will be released in May. Then the town will enter into another agreement, a long-term twenty plus year contract with Verage to build the solar array, have them engage in the long-term operations and maintenance, and eventually remove the solar array from the landfill at its end of, of life after twenty years of producing solar. That long-term contract will be sent, we'll be right back, we'll be in front of you again. You'll have to go through all of your town approval processes to make sure that that long-term contract is approved, but that won't happen unless and until we receive a, a winning bids in these SCF and, and res programs. So in some, this last table shows the the kind of timeline of our RFP, as Greg mentioned, we went out to RFP in December, we got all of our bids in. We had the preliminary selection. We're now at our February thirteenth meeting. We're going to ask for the final approval at your two weeks from now at a special town council meeting. And that'll give us enough time to get everything signed and submitted by March fourth for the SCF program and March fourteenth, the NRES program. And I know that was a lot and I, I was moving quickly, but I'm, I want to say thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I will stop sharing, but I can go back to the slides as needed.
Madam Mayor, you are muted.
Anybody have any questions? Also Jones?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You can put your hand up and in your, um.
Little thing. Uh, thank you, Robert, for the presentation. So I just want to make, be clear, if we don't get the SCF or the NRES, I guess their programs, then solar doesn't, we don't move forward with solar. Is that correct?
Um, great question. We don't move solar, move forward solar in this year and, and this round. These both the NRES and the SCF program each have at least one more year. The SCF program has one more year of opportunity next year. And the NRES program, I think there, we're in year three of six. So that program will continue. Our advice is to have the option agreement really focus in on this year and if we're successful, great. And if not, we may go out to RFP again and, you know, see what the market will bear for next year's programs.
And, and I think just remembering back from when you previously came, these programs give us incentives that make it worthwhile to build everything. If we, otherwise we don't get the incentives. Is that?
Yeah, no, these projects do not go forward unless they receive the incentive. The incentive helps fund and finance the, the solar arrays.
And can you just explain a little bit about the financial benefits to the town of four million over twenty years? So it's $200,000 per year. Is it, there's, there's no money coming through. It's just credits against electricity or how does that kind of work?
Yeah, good question. The two programs unfortunately work differently. So for the SCF program, in essence, you're just renting the landfill. You're leasing that space. And so there will be a lease or pilot payment, depending on the structure of the town prefers. And that's a long-term twenty year lease that's going to and it can be, you know, annually we'll pay, let's call it around $200,000 a year. But again, in that long-term contract, you can just, we can decide whether it's, you know, two payments of a hundred thousand every six months. It, it, it can be designed however you want. So that one, the power produced by the solar array in that case doesn't directly go to Groton. It actually goes to ever source to the grid and ever source manages who is using that power. The NRES program is the one that has the bill credits to your beneficial accounts. So on, in that program, your beneficial accounts will see literally a, a line item in the accounts. And I think there's a choice of whether it's quarterly or, or monthly. But on the bill, it would actually say, here's your bill credit or the solar produced in this case by another solar array, not in town, sort of elsewhere that Verage has in, in development. So what's nice is that Verage has, you know, come bought creatively and sort of structured a, a, a proposal that gives you the, in some ways the certainty of a lease payment and then the solar payment. The sun has to shine and it does. I mean, they model all those things, but you'll, you'll see that on your electric bills as a, a reduction there.
Um, can we move forward if we only win one of these programs?
Yeah, really good question. I, the, the, the more important one, if I had to lean in is the SCF program. Um, that's providing the, the bulk of the benefits to the town.
So, okay, so we're in reality, we're just renting our land to virology who sells the power back to, to ever source.
You, uh, thank you, Robert Ke- Ke- Keely, right? Is that how you say it?
Uh, Cle.
Cle, sorry. Yes, I actually remembered you from the Mystic Oral School and you came out and talked about the ten acres of convey the land, the, when you were working with the state at the time with DEET. I believe you came out and spoke about the land that they were trying to use a budding. But anyway, nevertheless, I, I've done a lot of research on you and I, I, I stand with your beliefs on the environmental side and I want to thank you for your due diligence and really actively being a supporter on the state level when you work with DEET into protecting Connecticut. So um, I think that's great. Looking at this, you know, any option to use an alternative is wonderful. Looking at the owner, it looks like this company has been around for about nine years. Is that correct? He's a local man with the University of Connecticut as well as, uh, looks like his business is out of Hartford. Is that also correct?
Uh, West Hartford, I think.
But, uh, West Hartford. Okay. Yep. So what I'm getting at local, which is what I love, you know, that to me is wonderful. Looking at the company online, they have a five, five star rating and some other research I've done. It seems like they have wonderful reviews. Um, for me, it's not just the company we pick, but it's the integrity of the company. It's the local accessibility of the company and the investment in our environment, in our local community, which is important to me. So I'm, I'm, I seem very happy and satisfied with a lot of that. Um, how many projects has this company actually successfully completed? That's my first question.
Um, good question. I'll have Sam on my team. We'll, we'll pull it up. It's in in sort of megawatt size. If you give him a moment, he will definitely get that answer to you.
I'll, I'll keep going. Um, so that, that's one question. And I just want to make sure that I guess the town manager, what is our outward cost, if any, um, outside of the agreement? That's my next question.
Uh, none that I know of. Greg, can you confirm that?
Yeah, that's correct. There's, you know, no cost to the town.
Okay. And even though this is just the starting point of a RFP process, you know, um, for me, looking back at other RFP process, not to beat, you know, um, beat the drum too hard here, but one of my concerns and one of the things I've been tasked with is that unfortunately, we've had some rough RFPs in the past and I just want to make sure that this one is going to have the protections shell, a company go bankrupt, pull out or any other criminal or other things that should, you know, arise. Again, not saying that this person does, but where is our protections in this investment as a town and a taxpayer?
So really good question. And those are definitely core elements of the long-term contract agreement that you enter into. They have provisions regarding the counterparty and what happens if the counterparty does go bankrupt and who might replace them. So those are definitely sort of elements of that sort of long-term contract. But again, and I, I, I def- I, I know from our, our first time around, you definitely do your homework. So again, part of our analysis was to ensure that Verage is a, you know, a, a company in good standing who has a good track record and in not just sort of winning RFPs, but actually building and developing stuff. So that's always a, a key part of our upfront analysis. I'm, I'm a lawyer. I know that of course you also have to, you know, guard against in those contracts, those, you know, things that you hope don't happen. But that is always part of the contracting process.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Mr. Cle. It looks like also this owner had some law experience as well. Um, so he's probably really good at making sure his RFPs are sound. So I did a little research on that as well. Um, again, research to me is so important because, you know, as a elected official and we are not, you know, paid, this is not our full-time job. We're getting the stuff after it's been vetted and processed. So we really have to do our due diligence. And so it's, it's, uh, sometimes the, the idea sounds wonderful, but we have, I, I feel tasked with digging it apart to make sure it's sound for the town. So at this time, all we're doing is pushing this forward, allowing us to see if we're going to get the competitive approvals. Once that happens, then we get into the detail of how we protect our town from there.
It, um, yeah. So I mean, you are actually approving us to enter into the binding option agreement, which is a key element of ensuring that this is a real sort of, at this stage, a partnership with this organization for the submission into the competitive program. So I don't want to discount that this it, it option agreement is an important first step. It then leads to that long-term contract if the the financial incentives are, are received. And again, working with the town attorney, we will sort of hash out that long-term contract, which will have to go not only here, but I think through other sort of town approval processes. So again, you'll have another sort of review process at that point.
So I guess the town manager or to Mr. Hanover, who was probably part of this, because unfortunately as a counselor, we were not part of writing this. We just get it to review. So maybe, um, can you familiar me, uh, bring me to the point where this first step of protection is highlighted in this document?
Yeah, let me just give me a moment to pull it up.
Uh, while he's pulling that up, um, I could speak a little bit about the experience of Verage. So, um, the executive team, uh, this is from their bid submission, uh, the, the executive team has successfully installed over three hundred and fifty commercial and industrial solar projects. Uh, they currently have a hundred and ten megawatts in various stages of development. And then their pipeline for earlier stages of developments is another two hundred megawatts of solar. Uh, and additionally, in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, Verage was named the number one commercial solar contractor in the state of Connecticut by Solar Power World.
Well, thank you for that. That's, uh, I didn't have all that information, but I had some of that and I definitely saw that they were number one and I love the fact that they were state and local. So that was, uh, very encouraging to me.
Um, just, you know, the, getting back to the option agreement council borderline, it's, you know, it's a twenty-one page document. There's, you know, uh, termination clauses on page four, there's a default clause, the whole section on page eleven. And, and our town attorney is, you know, is had some comments. They're not on this draft, but you know, he's going through and making sure that, you know, we are well protected.
So when will we see that, uh, first, uh, this draft is not final? The, before it's signed. So when, when, when will the council actually, because I feel like I'm agreeing upon something that's not final, which is a little uneasy for me. I, I, I don't like to.
Well, I don't think there's going to be any wholesale changes from this, but we would have the final at the and, you know, at the, the council, special council meeting in two weeks.
So in two weeks. Okay. So maybe at that time, can you, um, yeah. So at that time, can we go over in detail what those protections are?
Sure.
Cause I'm, I'm reading this and then, you know, I'm no attorney, but I want to make sure that those protections are in place. So if this company was to, we sign this and they decided X, Y, and Z, where, where is our safe? X, Y, and Z, where where is our safe? Uh, where's our safety at this point in the game? And I think that's kind of the presentation I'm hoping for, maybe on the twenty seventh. From the town side is, you know, show us where where our protection is. Uh, Tom Andrew Bird, are you familiar with the document enough to um, highlight any of that?
Uh, I was not in the, uh. I was not involved in the writing of it. That was between public works and the attorneys.
Right, so I read this here, um. And it's kind of hard because we don't have our attorneys here to ask the, you know, questions, which is um. Concerning for me, um, a little bit, uh, if we're, you know, we're signing a legal document today, uh, and. We have no one to to run it off of.
Just a reminder, we're not signing anything today. It's just the first step recommend- recommendation that you'll then have the ability to. Hear the further details at the next meeting.
So that will be the day we enter in on the twenty seventh then.
The day, right, right. You have to have actually passed the resolution before we could enter into it.
Right, okay, so I guess we'll, I will do some more note taking and do some more digging around in this document, uh. And have some other people look at this that have a little bit more experience than I and um, those would be my questions. I know you like to have them ahead of time. Would be to help me to understand where those protections are on the twenty seventh, okay? Thank you.
Sure.
And thank you, uh, for your um, presentation and all your hard work with, uh, DEET. I I really respect, uh, you and your resume. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Guyaski.
Thank you, Meta Mayor. Uh, most of my questions are related to the document, but um, as Director Hanover had mentioned, uh. During Council Board One's time, uh, that we would be going over those in two weeks. Uh, I do have a question, uh, from Mr. Cle. Uh, real quick, though. I want to, I my curiosity is. If say the, um. The company that, uh, Veraji, they sell to a different, to a bigger company or they merge with a different company. Or they have the option to sell the contract. Has there been past practice for that? Or is it pretty much sounds that once we agree with them, they get the contract and that's that?
So, Counselor, it's a really good question and this is, um, part of the. Solar industry, um, does often involve, um, certain companies that originate projects. Um, construct them, uh, hold them usually, and Sam, you should correct me if if I'm wrong. Usually hold them for roughly seven years or so, and then oftentimes they sell them to long term. Uh, sort of operations and maintenance, um, entities still within the solar world. Um, that are are there for the sort of long term, um. Sort of oversight of the the projects. Now, not always, um, and you know, some. Companies hold their projects for the entirety of the twenty years, um, but that does happen in the. Um, solar development world. And again, that is something that would be contemplated as part of the, um. The long term agreement of how those types of, um, transfers do happen. Um, Sam, anything you wanted to sort of add to that or no?
Uh, no, that, um, I have nothing to add, Rob.
Thanks.
And then, uh, my last question is for Director Hanover. Um, when. When and if we get the agreement, um, and they investigate the land. Um, will the town Public Works Department have any involvement in that or guidance or is it a partnership? Uh, when it comes to building the panels?
Oh, yes, absolutely a partnership. I mean, you know, as part of this, um, they'll have to go, uh, through some. Um, it may be extensive, I'm not sure, but permitting with DEP because, you know, we have permits for the, you know, monitoring the landfill. We have, you know, gas wells up there. All that's been taken into account. You know, we had a site walk with all the prospective. Bitter, so they know what they're getting into. Um, they'll have to go through all the. Uh, town P and C approvals. And as well as, you know, working with us to, you know, to make sure that. We can still, you know, get access to what we need to on the landfill. You know, one thing they they do when they do put the solar panels, they put a fence around the whole entire site. And then they do maintain, uh, the grass around there. So it actually helps us a little bit because we won't have to mow. A large portion of landfill anymore, at least for twenty years.
Bert, that's it, Mayor Franco. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Meta Mayor. Um, and thank you so much for this great presentation. It gave us a lot of information. Most of my questions were answered by the other counselors' questions. Um, just a couple, um, final questions. If we do not receive both the SCAF and the. NRES, sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that. Um, is it financially beneficial to the town to can, to move forward with this? Or would it be better to wait another year and try again?
So really good question, um, and, um. I think that with the SCAF alone, which is a relatively large, um. Sort of benefit that, um, is one that you would, um. Likely find in your best interest to move forward. The nice thing about the NRES program and your beneficial accounts. You could just, if you don't get them this year, you can bid them in next year. I mean, and that program still has three years of opportunity left in it. So that would be our advice would be to, you know, take the bird in the hand, which would be that long term sort of, um, lease at a a fairly. You know, sizable benefit to the town. And that doesn't preclude you from going back out again. Um, for your beneficial accounts in future years in the NRES program.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I read in here under three point seven that the developer shall design, construct, um, repair more. There's a few other things. Um, is there anything that that doesn't consider? So like if we have a hurricane and it takes out all of the solar panels, is the town liable? And what other risks did the town potentially have?
Yeah, so, um, great question. Um, this, the part of the benefit here of the. In essence, the town is just leasing its land to the solar developer. Um, it is their, um. They are strongly incentivized to produce solar and to to have, um. Uh, that system up and running and they only get paid when it is, you know, by the incentive. When they're actually producing the the power. So all of the things, um, on the developers end are, you know. Are aligned towards them, making sure that it runs efficiently, that they're constantly maintaining it and they're cutting the grass, so it's not shading it and that they're. Um, ensuring that, you know, that routine sort of maintenance and checks are happening all the time. It is also their equipment. Um, not the town's. So if the hurricane, the whatever, you know, act of of nature happens, it's. Their stuff and they have to replace it and they have to to fix it and they are incentivized to do so now. The contract will also, you know, to the extent that it's a total loss or or whatever, they would have to. Um, the contract would sort of contemplate what happens in in those situations that they have to sort of end their operations earlier. Because of some, um, uh, some force majeure type of, uh, event like that.
So, thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Um, so this all sounds like positives for the town. What are the risks? Anything?
Good question, um. So in the near term, there's, uh, you know. Risks that you don't receive the incentive, it doesn't, you know, so there, I I don't want to. Give a false impression that. You sign this option agreement and you're automatically on the road to that, you know, um, those financial benefits. The both these programs are very competitive and they're blind auction, so you you don't, uh, know. Other sort of risks, I guess, um, you know, that they're, you know. You're having inviting someone to sort of operate on your land. So there are, you know, some sort of risks that are associated with with that, so. But again, um, they would be responsible, um, for, you know, things that happen during the construction phase. Yeah, I'm.
Okay, I think I'm good. I thank you for your explanation. I really appreciate it. Meta Mayor, I'm I'm good.
Thank you. Um, any more first time speakers? Okay, Council Board Line.
Well, thank you. Um, so Mr., uh, Acleat, where where will you then, okay, we get past, you know, I'm looking at my notes. Well, first, I hope, um, if the town manager through the town manager, if you could send that slideshow presentation, that would be helpful to have. Um, so that way I can review it at a later time before the twenty seventh. Um, but we're, you know, now we signed this on the twenty seventh, we moved forward, we got the the best in the state for solar, we got. You helped us get there. There's options in here to sell off sections if we wanted. Wha- what point do you phase out or or what is your role after that point?
So really good question. Um, the, um, role of, uh, myself and and Sam and CSW Energy is to be. Um, your, um, continued sort of owner's rep, um, through the construction, um, and the development process. Um, so Sam, I don't know if you want to talk sort of briefly about, this is a service that we provide. Um, to a a number of towns in in the region through the development process.
Yeah, so, uh, we basically. Um, kind of act as like overseeing the the construction and that starts with like a kickoff meeting with. The town and the developer, um, getting all the parties introduced, um, in a. Or, you know, making sure the developer knows who to contact to get access to the property. Uh, make sure they know who to talk to on the town to go through the town's permitting process. Um, and then just making sure they are, the Verage ends up like hitting their milestones. Um, they're holding up their end of the bargain and, uh, keeping, you know, the town informed of. Uh, of the project, uh, progress of the project, um, whether things are running smoothly or if there are any delays or setbacks. Um, just so that. You know, e- everyone knows what's going on and what the status is and we're. Uh, we're kind of in the middle throughout that whole whole process. Um, you know, uh, up until, uh, the project is, uh. Um, commissioned and has permit, uh, like permission to operate from the Eversource.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for explaining that. Um, so. It looks like you're kind of, you know, basically the contact folks to to kind of be the the middle between this, um. And then that ends upon completion of the project.
Yes, when the the solar rays is complete, it's turned on, we're, um, and we're insured that it's actually. Um, yeah, delivering power. We're also insured that the, um. Other solar ray that's connected to your beneficial accounts, that you're seeing that those financial benefits coming in yet. So we just make sure you get to the point where. Everything is operating the way it should, um.
And how are you guys, um. Funded for your time? Is that through, um, if this goes through with, we get picked up and then. Everything's all set and we find out in May that yes, it's a go, then this, you know, lead solar company pays you guys for your time and the connection. It's not something that comes through the town?
Correct.
And then the other accounts, do you stay with us if we want to add more accounts? Let's just say the project's complete, but we haven't contracted out the other accounts yet. Say we wanted to hold. And we wanted to contract those other accounts out later. Would that be a renegotiation later with you to help get people to contract with us? Or would that be through the solar company?
Um, good question. So those beneficial accounts are going to be associated with a solar array for twenty years. So they need to have that connection to them, um, for that length of time, so. Um, likely, so that's, you know, um. And you can only use the town's ever source accounts, because I know the town also has, um. Uh, grounding utilities. So, um, that's part of the the NRES system is that. Once those are are married, so to speak, to a solar ray, you can't then reuse them. So these. I got a thumbs down from, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Never, sorry, never mind.
Oh, um, so my question is the contract accounts, who's managing that for that twenty year lifespan? Is that the solar company that we, that's that's going to be the, you know, the big name or who's? You know, because it sounds like RRP would have the major company plus a bunch of contracts. So who's? Who's kind of dealing with them on a regular basis?
So the, so Eversource knows to associate the, um, the. The payments to those accounts from the beginning and, um, and so that they sort of automatically are assigned. And they receive the bill credits.
Okay, so that's no tracking and 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 if someone was to pull out of that, is that? I mean, how would that work?
So I guess I'm unclear on pulling out of the.
I'm just.
You can, you can, you can switch it, you can switch accounts. Um, there's a a process to request that. Um, let's say instead of the firehouse account, you want to, you know, do the, um, town hall annex account.
I guess what I was saying is I thought maybe, and maybe my notes are wrong, yes, for the different parts in the town, but I thought we could also. Support another town or other entities, right, with our pet, with our location and they could be kind of. Bought in.
I know, I know you're right. So that was an original sort of option under this SCAF sort of program option. So the solar ray at the Flanders Road landfill. Is simply producing power just for Eversource and Eversource manages. Who the the power goes to is actually, they have a whole complicated sort of, uh, way that it goes to. Um, largely, um, a large percentage goes to, um. Low income residents across Eversource territories, some small businesses, but there's this. Um, that is entirely managed by Eversource and we don't, we can't choose, we can't influence, we can't say, could you move it from one account to the other? Uh, that's a a completely managed by Eversource. So the one at the landfill just goes into Eversource's ledger and Eversource. Handles who gets to benefit from that power and we have no say in that.
Perfect. So they have their own algorithm of sorts and how they determine, you know, where they their need is. So that explains.
They do, and they're regulated by the utility regulator on where they're sending it and, um, yeah.
Perfect. Well, thank you for explaining that and, um, I am in full support of this first step and I look forward to the September twenty seventh meeting. And hopefully by then, some of the questions I have regarding the RFP process and, um, hopefully the town attorney will be here as well to. Go over, um, any of those details that we might need to figure out, but I'm very excited and, uh, thank you so much for your hard work and, uh. Yeah, this is wonderful. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, do you have any more questions? All right, so I'm going to ask mine, um. Simple question first, access to land. If we do this, how would they have access to land? Because it is a gated area that's locked, Mr. Hanover?
Yeah, we would grant them full access, um, you know, through our transfer station or. Using the access roads that we have built on the top of the cap.
All right, um. Also, are solar panels taxable?
Um, we've had that discussion with the assessor and because this site is over three megawatts, um, it is. Technically, I guess taxable. We need to have that discussion with her, um, because the what, you know, Verge is proposing is a. Lease or slash pilot. So, you know, that the financials are based on, you know, not any additional taxes.
Right, because I just want to make sure that that's all set up before we go forward. Who's going to be paying if there is taxes on solar panels and how that will work out? Um. As asked, um. I'd like to make sure our lawyers are reviewing, so that's already been talked about. Um. And if they have any concerns. Um. So if on the property, if we did the whole property, that's more power than we would need for just. Groton's locations. Um, so it would benefit us to partner up with somebody. I believe you stated this in our last meeting. Is that correct?
Um, we we did talk about that in the last meeting, but this, um, the bidders actually presented this different option, this SCAF. The Shared Clean Energy Program, which works differently where the whole solar array and all of its power just goes to Eversource. So we don't have to actually manage who the other sort of towns are that are are benefiting from it. It is just entirely. Um, sending the power right under the grid and Eversource figures out who gets the the benefit from it. So it's in some ways simpler in that for the solar ray, you're just leasing the land.
Okay. And also, would we have a bond on, um, would the company have to have a bond on this and be, just in case. Something happened and they left and they left all their solar panels behind? I don't know who could answer that.
Rob, do you want to take that one?
Um, we did not, um, include a bond requirement in. In in this one, um. And to do so would potentially change the financial sort of arrangements, um.
Right, so if you just, let's say they left their solar panels behind when they left our left town or we stopped doing business and we didn't renew anything in twenty years. How would we remove all of that and? Would it be a hardship on the town? Mr. Hanover?
If we had to remove it, yes, it would be a hardship on the town. If we had to remove it, yes, it would be a hardship on the town because we would have to bear the cost of that as well as, you know, this disposable.
All right. So I'm just curious, like maybe if in at the next meeting, we could have a some kind of maybe somewhere in the contract or something of that nature. Some kind of, if I could see a protection in that, just simply because there are situations where the solar companies have been going, they have been going bankrupt. And then they're selling out or they go to another company and then they take over and some things just don't work the same as what you originally thought they were going to work as. So things change over time with the changing of businesses. So I just want to make sure that we're protected on that one. And we were talking about like, what happens if there's a hurricane? And so my question is, what happens if something happens to our landfill? And it's on our property, like just say, because we know it's basically, it's an old dump. And what if we have major sinkholes or there's a fire or something of that nature? Is that still the same protections if it's due to maybe our old trash?
So again, excellent question, the that long term contract sort of contemplates what falls on the side of the it it does recognize sort of openly and upfront that this is a former landfill and it's sort of, you know, that is regulated by deep on the and it does sort of contemplate what would constitute things that are a result of its use as a former landfill, which would be more on the town's responsibility versus things on the developer's side from their construction activities. One thing I will note though, that solar on landfill is a common sort of technique used both across the state and across the region. They've developed specific sort of systems that float on top of the, I mean, you're obviously not going to drive piles into the landfill because that would sort of cause problems with the cap. And those are designed to distribute the weight and be sort of, you know, cognizant that this was once a landfill. So they build that into the project to make sure that their solar arrays are suited and are, and again, that was part of our review process that they're going to use suitable products for their their racking systems. It's it's called in the ballast system that sort of keeps them in the right places.
All right. And Mr. Hanover, you're good with all that, right? You're the landfill expert.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, you know, we are, one of the things our town attorneys kind of adding in is some protections for you know, the environmental, the landfill, because, you know, Council Russ asked before, what is one of the maybe one of the negatives? And that probably could be the only one I could think of is, you know, some type of damage to the to the landfill, to the cap during construction. But, you know, we're building some language into the you know, it'll be in the in the long term contract where, you know, the Verage would be, you know, responsible for any repairs needed.
And exactly how, I I don't understand exactly how these payments are being received from the town exactly. Can you just like skim over this again, one more time? I'm so sorry.
The the payments to the town, well, no, and you're you're right there because we're they're going to participate in the two different programs, which will have two different sort of payment streams. The large solar array at the landfill, you're basically leasing the landfill to them for 20 years and they will pay an annual lease or pilot payment and you can sort of choose, you know, whether it's, you know, quarterly, you know, twice a year or or whatnot in terms of those payments. So that'll be a 20 year stream of lease payments. On the other side of the other system through the NRES program, which is the one that requires your ever source beneficial accounts. You'll identify, and I think we've, Sam, it's like 35 or so accounts, something, you know, we'll just call it 30 sort of accounts that have a use profile. So your electric use that matches one of the production from one of their solar arrays. And so literally the ever source does through their, you know, billing system understands how much solar is being produced by the solar array elsewhere and is literally going to put a line item in your bill. It says, and here's your credit of, you know, X amount. Or it's either monthly or quarterly and I apologize for not remembering, but that may even be something we can choose at that point. So, so again, so the the financial inputs are coming in from that lease or pilot payment for the thing on your landfill and then bill credits on your ever source bills for the other solar array that your your accounts are going to be paired with.
Is there any possible scenario that we would end up with money left over on the that last option you were just talking about where it would take off of our accounts? Would we ever have like a credit balance?
Yeah, they they do contemplate that in in the rules and if there is like a a balance, an over balance, they I think at the end of the year, they do a true up and they just send you like an extra check. Ever source.
Right, okay. Because I do have solar and they don't send me a check, they just hold it and just keep taking off my bill indefinitely, I guess. And my last question is, if we if we agree to the option agreement and something happens over the next so many months, before we actually build and go forward with this, is there a way to get out of the option agreement? And would that be under arbitration?
The option agreement has a a number of ways that it will end. It it sort of terminates if, you know, in in terms of not receiving the incentive. It has the opportunities if there's someone in default. Yeah, the and then it terminates regardless at the end of the year if there is no final. So it doesn't go beyond this one year of these incentive programs if we're we're not a winner in the incentive programs.
If we are a winner in the incentives and we don't like the terms, do we just have to accept them?
If we don't like the terms of the long term contract, no, you just don't enter into the long term contract.
Okay. Right, I'm all set. Does anybody else have questions? Okay. So I guess we're going to be voting on the motion that's on the floor presented by Council Guyaski and seconded by Russ. We shall do a roll call.
Board along, I.
Council Guyaski.
Hi.
Council Jones.
Hi.
Council Parker.
Hi.
Council Pacina.
Hi.
Council Russ.
Hi.
And I am a I as well. So thank you for coming and explaining this all to us and this will be great because so many people in our community have wanted this for such a long time, especially at that actual location. What it it it'll be just such a great use for it. So thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you for terrific questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pass seven to zero to zero. Next item is two zero two four dash eight nine, the Emergency Management Performance Grant. And Council Jones, would you like to read that?
This is for twenty twenty four dash eighty nine Emergency Management Performance Grant. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager or his designate to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program and to accept the grant funding in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and refer to the RTM per rule six point five point three. So moved.
Second, Bordelone.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Bordelone. And Chief Bizarra wanting to be discussing with us with tonight, with us tonight?
Yes.
All right. So would you like to present?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you made out all right today with the storm. This is a a grant that we've benefited from for the last two decades. It's the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Essentially, it's a grant that's managed by the state of Connecticut through the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Comes from the federal government and it goes out to municipalities. Really, it's a it's a grant that helps to offset the costs of emergency management for the town. Basically, it provides a subsidy, a matching grant for the town in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, half of the thirty eight thousand dollar sum that is required under this. But but it it offsets salaries for emergency management every state. Excuse me, every municipality is eligible for this. You have to meet certain criteria and you have to apply for the grant. Again, we've we've benefited from this grant for for just about two decades right now and that's about it. That's kind of a summary of of what this is for.
Okay, do we have any questions? Council Bordelone.
I don't really have any questions on this. I mean, like he stated, it's come every every year, so pretty familiar with it. Thank you for always applying and it's for me a no brainer that there's an option opportunity for, I don't want to say free money, but money that can be transferred from the state into our town. It's a no brainer to go for it. So thank you for applying.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess this one's going to be a quick one. So we will, we have the motion on the floor, moved by Jones, seconded by Bordelone. We'll do roll call again.
Bordelone, I.
Ayski.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Pino.
Hi.
Russ.
Hi.
I am also an I. So thank you so much for coming on this one. And it passes seven to zero to zero.
Right, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. The next one is two thousand twenty four dash one three nine, Connecticut Deep and Pure. Council Russ, would you like to read this one?
Absolutely. Thank you. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager or his designate to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts deemed necessary or appropriate to apply for and accept the Public Education and Governmental Programming and Educational Technology Investment Account, PEGPISHA, grant funding in the amount of forty four thousand ninety five dollars and refer the matter to the RTM per rule six point five point three. I so move.
Second.
Second, Parker.
Bordelone. Moved by Russ. And who will be presenting this this evening?
Good evening, everyone. This is Jennifer Neely, Library Director, and I have Sean Greeley with me from GMTV. Hello, how are you tonight?
Very good.
So this grant application is something that we've been applying for for since twenty twenty two. We have applied for this three times and this will be the fourth time. This grant specifically has given GMTV the opportunity to make many tech upgrades that would have otherwise been asked for in the library operating budget or even a CIP. And Sean has made some amazing progress with implementing many of the items that he has purchased with these funds over those last three years. And we're looking to continue that by upgrading more things and also having the ability to archive, better archive some of our technology or programming on GMTV. And Sean, of course, has more information on particulars if you have any questions.
Okay, questions, Council Bordelone?
Again, not much of a question. I remember the first year you brought this forward and it was very exciting and we benefited from the upgrades in mics the first year at the RTM and then at the desks in the council and many other media upgrades. And as we know, for open and transparent government, it's so important. You guys provide a vital role. And I think we do it better than some of our surrounding municipalities as well. I'm very thankful when I come to the town side and I want to look back at meetings and how accurately they recorded as well as the clarity. So again, for me, it's no brainer. I won't be asking much because it's the same stuff every time. And I think, thank you and appreciate you guys applying every year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess we're going to vote on this one. Once again, do a roll call vote.
Bordelone, I.
Council Guyaski.
I.
Jones.
I.
Parker.
Hi.
Pacina.
I.
Russ.
Hi.
And I am I as well. That passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay. Up next is two zero two three dash eight three four dash one, a former Groton Heights School excess property disposition.
Evening. So we'll start there with Groton Heights then, a little background. I I put all the background for the property, the bulk of it in the document. We went through almost the entire process, got to the point with Thera Mahan as being the preferred developer. Unfortunately, that ended up not working out. However, the good news is they're still going very strong and growing in the town. So that's good news. Just have to find the right partner for this. Another mention, just a reminder, we had also been working with the Building Memorial Library, if you recall that, as part of a property swap. That's still ongoing. I'll touch on that in a second. Just kind of wanted to put that back in your head for that. He as you say, after the air behind kind of fell by the wayside, the town council had been working on redoing the policy. There was a bit of a pause as that was worked out. That was last year, a new one was adopted. Moving forward with that policy, the first day step in that is the the town owned property evaluation committee looking at vacant properties. They did look at this Groton Heights property again. And the the policy calls for that committee to make a recommendation to town council. That's the first step after the after the committee reviews their does their work. And after October eighteenth, two twenty twenty three meeting, they did recommend the sale of the property. That's the recommendation to the town council. Also recently, town staff, Attorney Callahan met with several of the library reps to discuss that land swap. That there's quite a bit of lead time to that swap. So what we're looking at is if the council wants to move forward with looking at some of the property, we would be doing two things simultaneous, moving through that process, working with Building Memorial Library for the land swap. And the intent would be to finalize that land swap right, like right immediately before finalizing the sale to make, so we'd basically be the lead out of all that, doing the legwork on that. If you go to page fifty eight, the next steps, you'll see the policy on page fifty eight, the property reuse policy. If you go down to four, number four, that's the next step. This is the part where what we're doing right now is submitting recommendations to the town council regarding the disposition of the property. The next part is, it says the town council shall refer any recommendation to the PZC Planning and Zoning Commission or CGS eight twenty four and schedule a public hearing to gather public input. This is not the official CGS public hearing that comes later, but it's an additional public hearing that that happens with this policy. We're looking at hopefully consensus to hold the first public hearing at the March fifth meeting. So we would have a public hearing at the March fifth meeting. Council would decide where they want to go from there. If you do decide to move forward, the next step is for town staff to draft a RFP using any input you give. So after you get public comments, you decide to move forward, you say whatever you want in the RFP, you tell us and then we build it in, then we send it out for comment to the RTM and PZC Planning and Zoning Commission. And then after that point, the RFP is released and the mayor forms the properties sale review committee to review those proposals. They make recommendation to the town council ultimately. And then if the council still wants to continue moving forward, the official planning zoning, official public hearing would be held and that includes two newspaper notices, posting a sign at the property. So it's a little more involved, a legal process for that. It would have, it would go to the RTM for approval after that. And then after the RTM approval, you would decide whether to grant authority to move forward with any potential sale. I've got, I believe both Paige and John are here to answer any technical questions and then just let you know, Jason Rusk is on under attendees in case there's any just let you know, Jason Rusk is on, under attendees in case there's any, uh, he's representing the Bill Memorial Library. And just to point out too, I believe in the packet is a letter for Bill Memorial Library endorsing moving forward. So again, what the request is, is to further the policy, it says, shall send the recommendation to the, uh, Planning Zoning Commission and then schedule the public hearing. So we're looking at March fifth, hopefully.
Counselor Borderline?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I think that makes sense because looking at this as it states in our packet, the last, um, public hearing was held in twenty twenty-one. So I think it's very pertinent that we have a chance for the community to reset the pulse on this building because it was constantly being extended and then the developer backed out. So it was kind of a bit of a, it's kind of left in the, in the wind for some people as to where we are. Um, so I do think that that's very important. I just hope that that will be advertised on social media and all the other, uh, avenues appropriate. Um, as far as the land transfer, I mean, again, um, would that, I guess, the town, town manager, that would be part of the public hearing? Would that be separate? Or how would that go with this?
Uh, we would present everything we have to date, basically everything that's in the packet, which also includes discussion of a property swap. And, um, the boundaries are not exactly set, but they're close to being set. Uh, but certainly we would, uh, discuss that out there, be able to give a presentation on that at the public hearing. And we, and we would follow all, uh, post it everywhere, including we would put a notice in the newspaper for the public hearing.
And when will we know the boundaries exactly?
Not until we're well into, towards the end because it's just the, it could shift five or 10 feet. I, well, you know, the general boundary, it won't really matter. It won't make much difference, but because you could have a certain setback, you need to lock that in with the developer at the same time. You just gotta make sure it works for everybody.
Yeah. So I, I do think that is kind of old news too, in the sense that it's been long and maybe people in the community have changed their mind on that. So I do think it needs a refresh. So I do appreciate that. Um, and I think it should be clear in the, um, the public hearing that that is included, that there is a potential land swap as well. Um, and I think it's a reset. Um, I do appreciate the Bill Memorial Library as a person who lives in the city. Um, but we need to make sure, you know, what is good for the town, um, and make sure that's something that, you know, the people in the community still want at this time. Um, and so as long as it's open and transparent, I think that's a forward progress and no, no sense of talking about the rest of it because that would be part of developing the RFP down the road. My other question is the twenty twenty-one, um, policy that you're using, has that been vetted by the town attorneys yet?
Uh, the, uh, the council has not indicated they want to move forward with the full vetting. So until I get direction from the council.
So this hasn't been reviewed yet at all. This is just, because originally there was a full draft and then we cut it down to this, but this, I was told in my notes here, I looked it up in the video, is that the attorneys were gonna take a look at the twenty twenty-one and give us, uh, some information back and I looked back and I hadn't found anything back yet. So I just want to make sure that whatever that plan was, is that we're following it, you know, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-one draft.
It came up at some point. I can't remember if it was part of goals or what, but that was not, uh, voted on as moving forward to being done.
Yeah, I don't think it's really a goal. It's about process. That's how this town owned property reuse was, you know, committee was organized. I don't think it needs to be a goal or a priority. Those are things that we want to change. These are just governing rules, in my opinion, that we want to follow to make sure we're dotting every I and crossing every T because we've had some problems on this, in this area in the past. So if that's not the will of the council, I just wanted to clarify on the record for my notes, it would make sense that you'd want the attorney's opinion since we're following this twenty twenty-one document. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm all, I mean, the building is, um, sitting there and continuing to be vandalized. So I think it's been, uh, long overdue and I hope that when we move forward with the RFP process, that we don't wait as long as we did with the last developer. Thank you.
Counselor Russ?
Thank you. Um, before I start, I do want to say that I am on the board of the Bill Memorial Library, as is my husband, um, who somehow got bumped off. Um, but I received no financial gain from this, so I will participate in this, um, discussion. Um, I have heard from a lot of people in the neighborhood as well as throughout Groton. I'm very thankful that this is moving forward again, um, asking that it be continued to move forward quickly. Um, as Counselor Borderline said, it's been sitting vacant for a long time and people in the neighborhood would really like to see it being reused. Um, that being said, people would like to see the actual building being reused. Um, it's a very historic building in our neighborhood. I do live in this neighborhood. Um, and it's, it's very valued. Um, so I think hopefully our RFP can, um, continue to have that as being reused. It is a single family neighborhood with the exception of that school. Um, so the other thing that I have heard from neighbors is that it doesn't become a multiplex area. Um, obviously the school itself could be reused in mul, for multiple homes if that's the way it goes. Um, but that the rest of the property not be, um, apartment buildings because that isn't what the, the neighborhood looks like. Um, I am definitely in favor of the land swap. I think it makes sense for both the town and for the Bill Memorial Library. Um, it is, the Bill Memorial Library has leased that land to the town for a very long time for, I think, a dollar a year, I think. Um, if I remember correctly, um, so hopefully we can, um, that, that swap can be made. And, um, it would be good, I think, both for the town, for the new developer and for the library. So, um, I look forward to, moving forward with this. I look forward to the public hearing and I just want to say thank you for making this a priority.
And, and again, uh, if, if after the next, uh, that first public hearing, the council, whatever, if you decide to move forward at that point, whatever things the council tells us to put in, we'll put in. And the, the goal's always been to save the main building. Uh, we discussed that with Bill Memorial Library, uh, meeting recently. Now, some of the later things like the gymnasium is not as, you know, critical. It's the, the core building that we've talked about, but whatever the council's desire is, is what we'll do.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Bird, I, I guess my question is to, directed to you. Uh, Thermo Han was the preferred developer. Do they still have, and they had that, that letter of intent. Do they still have any interest or control on this property or are they clean?
No, they sent a letter of releasing from that. They ended up, uh, as, you know, one of the things that's, is, you know, they bought out the rest of the building. They were at, expanded there. That was one of the reasons that they didn't move forward. So had another opportunity that worked for them.
So everything reverted back to the town and we have full, full control over it?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great. That's good.
It, it was never, you know, they, yeah, they had, yeah, not an option. They just had the, uh, letter of intent to move forward. So it was never really any, anything, uh, binding.
Okay. Um, I am also in favor of sort of cleaning up the Bill Memorial Library, um, property lines and and getting that all nice and clean. Um, so that's just to put my support behind that. And, um, uh, I think, what do you sort of anticipate in sort of time? Um, coming, what's sort of, in the next steps, what's sort of the time, the timeline on this stuff?
Right. So, so assuming we have the public hearing on March fifth, if, if you gave us direction after that public hearing, you know, I don't know if you'll be ready that night, but let's say you were. You, you hear all the comments, you give direction to us and what you want to see in an RF, in a draft RFP. Um, if that, if that go ahead was given, then we, we have, of course, we already had the old RFPs. There's been some updates done to it. So there's already pretty near ready drafts to go. So whatever direction and guidance you give, that gets, you know, updated there. And then we send it out to RTM for probably a month and to PZC, hopefully they could get their comments back within a month. And then, uh, from there, we, uh, move forward with releasing the RFP and the mayor would form the committee to review. And, uh, John or Paige, how long would you, once we, once we put our FPL, uh, how long would you anticipate before bids would actually come back in? What's the typical timeline?
Usually sixty days.
Right. And then so, uh, once bids are, of course, then it's a process interviewing, you know, doing background checks, interviewing committees, uh, interviewing the developers, that type thing. You know, so that's obviously gonna take a few more weeks at least. Um, before possibly the committee would make recommendation back to the council. And then at that time, you then do the official process for a public hearing, which you have to do, you know, it'll take a month. You have to have basically a month lead time before the public hearing to post accurately, adequately. And then after that, then you decide whether to send it on to their gift. So it's a lengthy, even in the best of times, it's gonna be a lengthy process.
So it could be early fall somewhere before we
Certainly.
So we sort of see things start to come.
Right. And obviously we'll make this a priority, move it along just as fast as we can while making sure we comply with everything in the policy.
Okay. Um, and then on the, the town council meeting where you're looking for some direction, what kind of things are you looking for? Is it things like we want multifamily housing or we want light manufacturing? Is that what you're looking for or?
Uh, wha- whatever you guys gleaned out and decide after the public hearing, it could be, we want only one building, like was just mentioned by Counselor Russ. Could be, we want, you know, percent affordable housing. It's whatever the council, um, wishes is, you know, and obviously we'll give, you know, I'm sure you'll probably bounce some ideas off of us. We'll give some input on it and whatever you tell us is what goes.
It might, might just be good to sort of pull some of those RFPs together, just so we can see what some of the options are that are sort of the laundry list of things that sort of could happen, might be helpful for us to help just sort of make some of those decisions. So, um, okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino?
You're muted.
There we go. Yeah, I was talking to myself for a couple of seconds. Okay. So my question would be, I'm, I'm all for the land swap. I'm all for whatever we want to do with that piece of property as far as keeping, uh, the, the main building and, uh, but I'm, I'm curious as to what is the approximate size of the two parcels that are gonna be swapped?
Uh, they're not real big. John or Paige, you happen to know offhand approximately what those?
We don't have, uh, an exact survey on those yet. Um, they are similar in size, relatively small. Um, I'm gonna guess that, um, parcel that the town has might be quarter acre or so. And the Bill Memorial Library parcel, about a half acre. But the town's parcel, um, has a view of the water. And the library parcel is more off to the side. Um, obviously has value because it's adjacent to the school property. But I think the town's property is a little bit smaller than the Bill Memorial Library, but it has, um, a key location.
And I do see Jason Russ hand, he might have something to contribute to that question.
Uh, sure. Um, thanks, Mr. Bird. I just wanted to contribute that at some point, um, we had, uh, we had evaluated um, measurements, um, with a drawing, again, pending an official, uh, um, land survey. But both parcels were just about a half acre, uh, to my recollection with, uh, with the town owned property right in front of the school being maybe just a hair under and the, the bill's property being just a hair over. But they were within a, a few hundreds, I think, of each other. They were, they were very close in size.
Thank you very much. And my, my second question is, uh, why do we have to do this land swap so close to the sale? Why can't it just be done soon or later?
Uh, there, there's some lead time involved with this land swap. It's probably good, it's gonna take just about as long as getting through the RFP process. So if we did it first, you would be waiting a long time to do a sale. And that building is, that building's still usable to sell, but it is getting in worse and worse condition.
Understood. Thank you.
Are you all set?
I am. Thank you.
Counselor Guyaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my quick question, uh, two quick questions. The first one is for Manager Burt. Um, will we be advertising that, are we gonna be advertising the property as it is now or are we gonna be advertising it with the land swap if we, land swap if we choose to do that?
Let me mention, I think the last RFP, Paige and John, it was mentioned as a possibility in the RFP that the Bill Memorial Library was desirous of that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, we make reference to the land swap in the RFP. Uh, we also have an attachment in the RFP that references, um, those two land areas as well. Um, I think there may be some reference, uh, from the Bill Memorial Library that we include as well. Um, to, to try to provide credibility to that content.
Now, is it possible that a developer could say, no, I don't want to do the land swap? Or if it's, do we just not pick them to the RFP process or how does that work?
Well, first of all, if we stipulate something, then that's the boundaries of the, you know, of the bids. Well, if you left it, you know, any kind of thing looser, then it would be up to, you know, the process. But every intent is, you know, we're fully, I'm fully committed to, assuming the council wants to, is to making sure we do the land swap.
Okay. And then my last, this one's gonna be really hard, uh, because we're on Zoom. But on page, on, um, page fifty-five of our council packet, could you briefly explain to me where the land actually, what land is actually being swapped here? I'm a little confused about looking at the lines right now.
I might be able to explain that. Uh, this is John. So when you're looking at that map, um, say the top of the page, you see a line that says one seventy-seven point eight four.
Yep.
So the land going north of that.
The two forty-seven? Roughly.
Uh, where it's like one seventy-seven.
Yeah, and then up north, yeah, to the two forty-seven line. Hundred forty-seven, hundred forty-seven feet north.
Yes. And then, so that's the piece that would be swapped out with the land that is then in front of the school. When you look at the, like the, where the ninety-one point oh five, the tw- two seventy point twelve, the four eighty-seven point five six, kind of the, that swath of land that's right, um, in front of the existing Groton High School.
All right. So the red, the dotted red line going adjacent to the line that's two seventeen point seven nine, those Xs right there, that, those mean that is, that's all Bill Memorial Library property. Those Xs don't mean anything, correct?
If you go down to the bottom of that line, it's
Can we share with, um, the packet potentially maybe? And so we can
Have to give me one moment.
Might be a little easier. And then people at home will know what we're talking about as well.
Give me one moment.
And another way of explaining it, it's basically the land that would be outside of the front door of the Groton Heights School that's adjacent to the Groton Monument. That kind of longer skinny piece is what would be getting transferred over to the Bill Memorial Library.
Can you see the map now?
Yes.
Okay. So do you see this kind of rectangular area? I'm, got the ninety-one zero five in the west there. You got the two two hundred and seventy feet, point twelve there.
Yep.
Got the gap here. This is the area that we own, that they're interested in to make sure there's not, you know, they, they want to make sure they can connect up from their property, which is lovely, to the ground memorial all through here, that this is all, you're not gonna be built over. It, you know, remains a nice public piece of property. And then, and then this piece, more of a square piece-ish, that is where, uh, they own, that would be swapped us. Which of course is, you know, obviously as you can see, needed for parking.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that very quickly. I'm all set, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Counselor Borderline?
Uh, thank you. I remember looking at this before and for me, it was a bit of a no brainer because looking at the library and living here, you know, for many years, uh, and looking at the monument, it just makes sense to have that uniformity to be able to move between the campus, so to speak. So if you're coming from the monument or coming from the fort, that that land is all there. Also, it was stated that that land, um, has some water views and I think that's an asset to the community, uh, to keep. Um, so it would make sense. Um, and when you break this down and draw lines, it looks more clean when it's, you know, broken down in that fashion. Um, some people have asked me, I remember from last time, would there be some type of first right of refusal, refusal? Let's just say the library decides down the road, they're in, running into hard times and they, you know, needed money and they wanted to sell that parcel off. Um, is there some protection that we could say that please contact the town first? That's my first question.
So basically a reverter clause. So basically a reverter clause in the, under certain circumstances in the sale. Certainly the council could include that. It's, you know, assuming the Bill Memorial Library would agree to same.
Right, because what I'm worried, you know, and it's not this, I mean, we don't know who's gonna be around in forty or fifty years. But that is an asset uh, to the town and, and, and many years ago. Folks did talk about why not making that a secondary park in a sitting area that is owned by the town. Um, because of the water view access. Um, so I, I think that is not a bad idea that if we're. You know, we're swapping and giving them the better piece for the, but, but for the betterment of the town. That maybe we do have that reverse clause in there, which simply says, in the event that the Bill Memorial was gonna sell, that, that the town. Would have a chance to buy it back first, to keep it, you know, um. Cause it's land and it's a great area to keep. So that is something that I would um. And it doesn't uh, hurt, I did speak to some real estate people, it doesn't hurt the Bill Memorial Library in any way. Cause in fact, if they're going to sell it, they're trying to sell it for money anyway. So where they get the money really wouldn't matter, but it's a way of keeping that asset. Um, in the town or city, I'm not in uh, moving towards any form of development in thirty, forty, fifty years. When we're not around or on these boards to protect that land. So anyway, thank you. And so John, I would, that's something we can talk about when we get closer, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a quite a long ways off, but yes, I totally agree with you.
Thank you so much.
Councillor Rusk.
Just a point of information, John, um, can you explain what the purple is on page fifty-five? On the map, there is um, north of the school, there's a big. The, the big square.
This?
No, 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 down. So there's, yes, that.
I'll let John pay. I forget what that is. John or Paige?
That might just be a walkway from the parking lot around.
Oh, it is. You can see it on there. You'll see here.
Uh, okay, thank you. Just curious on what that was.
Just to point out while I have this up, you can see how that the uh, town's piece is mostly green with some walkways, whereas. You know, where we'd likely potentially need parking. See, there's already pavement there, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's it.
Okay, Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I am for the land swap, but if we're gonna put, put in a reverter, can we do the same with the sale? Of the property it, when we sell to someone?
They're not gonna develop it because, you know, developers turn over properties. Once you, once you sell to developer, that's pretty much it.
Okay, just. Confirming. But most of that's gonna be open space anyways, right next to Bill Memorial Library. So their, it's their goal is to have it open. Open space, not building it or selling it. So it still will be. Open land and probably maybe some benches or something out there. So I'm okay with not having that to force an issue, cause it might not look good on our end. And I'm ready to move forward. I really like to see the property out.
And just to mention, I do know the, kind of along what you were just saying about benches and things, I do know the Bill Memorial Library are working on plans, especially after COVID. And the need for outdoor activities, outdoor space. I believe they're working on plans on uh, on their own properties and then. You know, contingent, you know, on the sale that swap that they would, I think Jason Crutchman were wrong, but you would be looking and doing things on this piece too.
Oh, that's correct. Right. And, and we'd just like to. Um, you know, we're, we're interested in pursuing the land swaps so that we, we know what the library's boundaries are, so that we can make plans for. Um, use of uh, some grant money that's out there uh, for outdoor space, for uh, um, you know, community programming. Thanks.
You're all set, Councillor Parker?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I had a question. Would we be doing a new appraisal on this property?
We would need an updated one, yes. John, has that been ordered yet or we, or i- i- or is, is it too early for that? I can't remember.
I uh, I can't recall if we got an updated appraisal on this.
I know we've talked about it, but, but yes, we would.
We may have.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll. I can trust.
Certainly the value comes into play as you, as you are analyzing proposals.
Right, cause um, last time I think we had an appraisal was done. It says in the write-up here is two thousand eighteen for. For hundred sixty-seven, and that was pre-COVID, so I'm sure.
It's gonna change a lot, yes. We would.
It might change a lot.
We would definitely have an updated appraisal. Same thing with, yeah, any, any, any schools that we would do, we'd want a recent appraisal.
Okay, um. So I am also in favor of moving this. Go ahead, Mister Reiner.
I, I, I did order a new appraisal of that. Um, I think I have it, but I, I just have to find it. So I did get a new appraisal for Pleasant Valley and Groton Heights. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. No, it's good. It's information I needed. Thank you. That's what I needed. Um. So I think um, as was discussed earlier, if there are. This process um, that we came up with and approved at the council. Um, if there's anything in here that violate any kind of. Uh, state laws, or if there's any kind of violation of our charter or any of that such, such thing. Mister Bird, you will just do what you see fit and um.
The only thing I know of is that technically the, you know, by policy, the council can't direct town staff, whoever. I, I'm giving permissions, you know, so that's fine with me.
Okay, so. Other than that, um, if there's anything else that pops up or arises out of this policy while you're going through it and you think that there may be. An issue, please bring it back to us and we can absolutely do amendment to this policy as was clearly stated before, so. Um, and then I'm very excited because as a council. This was one of our top goals is to take care of these school properties. And we all agree, and we've all heard from residents and they, we hear all the time about how they're just like, get it back on the tax rolls, do something with these properties. It's. We're just so tired of like them just sitting there. So I'm very excited about it. The previous um, person that was in an agreement with us was willing to do the land swap. They were all in favor of it. They. Because honestly, I don't think people think of the front of the school as the front. They think that's the back. So no, majority of the people who look at the school don't realize that that's part of the property anyway. They would think of it as. Um, what, I did go to school there too. The playground was, you know, they think of that as their property, but which is actually Bill Memorial and. I don't know why we played on all that time, but they must have allowed us to, so um. But um. Do you need a consensus tonight, or do you actually need a motion to, to tell you to go forward?
Just a consensus. The policy calls for it anyways, but I just wanna make sure that you are indeed in favor of moving forward. With this piece, with getting a public hearing.
So I'm hearing from the council a consensus to move forward and on the part where you have to go to the. When it has to go to the town council, I'll show referring and recommendations for sale disposition of property to the planning and zoning commission under. CGS eight two four. Would this be city or town plan zoning?
Well. I don't think about it. It would be uh. John and Paige, I mean, it's obviously gonna eventually go through that whole process, but at this phase. It probably would be the city, wouldn't it? John and Paige? I don't think, that's a good question.
I, I believe it's looking at consistency with the town of Groton's plan of conservation and development. I'll have to double check that, but. I mean, however you wanna move forward with it, but I think it really uh, refers to the town's P O C D.
All right. And if we send it to them and do we actually get a response or how does that work exactly?
Yeah, so we had formally sent uh, this to the planning and zoning commission under that eight twenty-four referral to the town's planning and zoning commission. And they do send something back, back in um, they had reviewed it previously in February of twenty twenty. And that they found that the sale is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Uh, we still have the same P O C D now, uh, but again, um, we can certainly send it to the commission again.
I'm just curious, do we have to send it again? Does this expire? Do they only last for so long? These, you know, the responses?
They don't expire, however, you know, I think, you know, given a past, you know, history, if they, I'd rather. Follow it to the T really moving along.
No, I would concur with that. I'm just curious, like if they're only good for three years or something, then I'd be like, or four years, then I'm like, all right, we're in the window, but if they're. Times change and opinions change, so I do understand what you're saying.
Well, and you know, we won't have the public hearing for another, you know, three weeks-ish. They're usually pretty quick, what I've seen in the past, getting, you know, replying to these, so it's probably not gonna be much of a delay anyhow.
So from what I've heard from the council is that we are sort of in a consensus to move forward. Um. And that would include sending the rec, you know, to the. The sale disposition to the, the planning and zoning commission and scheduling a public hearing. If anybody has an issue with that, they'd like to speak up now. Okay. So I think we're all set on that one. It is eight thirty. We've been going for two hours. Can we take a ten-minute break, everybody? Okay. All right. So uh, we'll take a recess and we'll be back about eight forty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Okay, we're back from recess at eight forty-three. Mr. Bird, did you have one more thing you wanted to mention about this?
Uh, you had asked about the appraisal. Uh, Mr. Reiner did find the updated appraiser appraisals. He was just gonna mention the Grand Heights one briefly.
Yes, uh, thank you. So the original Grand Heights appraisal, uh, the value of that, hold on, I'm just, uh. Jumping between screens here. Was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That one was, uh, effective May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. And the new appraisal, which was effective November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Was actually a two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So it did drop in value a bit. And in the appraisal report, uh, the appraisal mentions just the age of the building. You know, it's a nineteen twelve vintage structure that the town wants to see preserved as well as, um. He does mention that in the first appraisal that there was a leaking roof, but, uh, since that time, the building. Had a new roof cover installed within the last five years. So the leaking that, uh, had happened during the last inspection had stopped, so that was good. But it's, uh, also just an older building, uh, that doesn't have, uh, mechanical systems in place. So. You know, that the age of the building is, uh, what is leading to.
The policy and how that works. I will go through that again. The, the town's, uh, top committee.
You're muted. We couldn't hear you.
On this property, those potential neighboring properties.
Just a point of information, um, is that, John, is that also two thousand twenty-three for the appraiser appraisal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're just like we did with the previous one. I'm also, uh, in favor, and I don't know if this is the right point to do it or not, of. Carving out some part of this land eventually for some kind of a park or recreation or something. Um, I know we've had discussions about this on and off, so, um, that's, uh, I'm in favor of that also. Mr. Bird or, or Mr. Reiner, is this property a little bit more, um. Open for other uses other than housing? Can this be for, um, you know, because this could be light manufacturing or training or something else that.
Yeah, yeah, there is some educational training type things that could be used for besides multi-family housing. John, do you remember Paige? What else things besides that could be?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't remember all of the particular uses that were there. We could do, uh, you know, some.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilboard line.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I mean, again, we had a plan and a developer and it did not pan out and. The property sat, so I am happy to hear that we're keeping up with the utilities, uh, this time around. Um, cause I'm not sure like what the old model was thirty years ago or twenty when these buildings were vacated. It's they. Weren't left in a position that they maintained themselves. And then again, some of this is way before you guys even came. Um, like so, uh, but hopefully, um. I guess to the town manager, is there a process somewhere that states how we should leave these buildings? Uh, or is that something we have to look into as a council at some point?
Well, we have the, you know, the process probably it's transferred over and out. We had the discussion like on when the newer buildings came, we discussed with the council. What would be done, if you recall, um, uh, Claude Chester, we were told to turn utilities off because it would not likely be reused.
There was some concerns about the landscaping. Um, some people had, you know, reported to me and I know that you had someone come out there and clear it up. I think this is a prime property for development. I think it's in a. Mixed use area. It's in that type of district. I'm concerned about the industrial zoning of it because. When it, the, I looked up the years when it was, uh, zoned in relation to when the houses were built behind it. So, and with the water protection area. I do have some concerns about that, so I would love to see, um, do you know when that was zoned, um, industrial?
I will say it's that it's light industrial, like no heavy equip. There's a lot of, no heavy equipment. It's very limited on what you can do there.
Yeah. Do you know what year that was considered light industrial last time it was reviewed?
I, I don't believe that it was a light industrial use. I'd have to go back and look at the, um. The zoning history. No, I was saying that we'd had some interest in people for light industrial uses. But I believe right now it's a multi-family zoning district and I.
Which has a lot of education and training.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just concerned.
It's not, it, it was never an industrial zoned piece of property.
All right. Even with light industrial, depending on what it is, I, I would be concerned with the water and the houses there, so that'd be something to consider. I do think this needs to get on right away, get moving, um, and you know, my hopes down the road would be, obviously it's in a great location for employment and bus routes. It had, would be a great mixed income workforce readiness type of housing. Um, so we'll see what that looks like down the road, but the first step is to get it on. And my hopes is that we don't sell it for a dollar because it does have significant value and, um. But we need to make sure we can get some revenue back to the town. So, uh, let's get it moving forward and it's long overdue and, uh. I look forward to seeing this and having it part of the hearing process. I also agree with Council Jones. As many people did report, I agree with keeping a piece of the, over there for, uh, parks because there is not a lot of. Open kind of space over there. So I think that would be a great use of sorts to have, um, in that particular location. Thank you.
And Council Gajaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh. To, I'm gonna emphasize, I'm gonna emphasize, uh, the, as many councillors have other stated first, uh, the need for. Uh, parks slash playground in that area, uh, that side of town, uh, believe all councils are very well, is lacking in that type of space. So I. Would like to see a small parcel of this, uh, be taken out for that purpose. And then my, uh, my question is in regards to what pieces of the land is, uh. Watershed. Is it like, does a certain portion of it have to be watershed? Or not watershed, what's it called? Water resource protection, sorry. Uh. What, yeah, what portion of the land is in the water resource protection?
I, I'll have to double check the map, uh, but I believe the entirety of the property is in the water resource protection district. And you know, what that means is it, it drains to, um, you know, it's within the watershed of our drinking reservoir. And we just have some higher standards for, uh, limitations of use in that district as well as. Uh, higher stormwater requirements and how it's to be treated as well as that a portion of the land has to remain in its natural state. So, and, and that's something that our zoning regulations are now incredibly strict and very precise. On redevelopment of property in the water resource protection district. And it's, uh. Yeah, there, there's a lot of, uh, belts and suspenders in place to make sure we, uh, protect water quality.
I just like zoning is residential multi-unit RM looks like.
Yeah, prior to that, it was residential.
Okay, um, so it is, there is, it's very limited of what you can do with this property. Is that what you're hinting at here?
Well, it's, there are some limitations, but our water resource protection district regulations also limit the uses that are in there as well as. Um, you know, really what can be stored on the property, how the outside of the property is used, how drainage is calculated and etc.
Is there, is there any, uh, precedent, uh. With a property we've sold before that the town, um, has done that is in the water resource protection district? Uh, just to kind of give us an idea of what we may be looking at.
Uh, there was a small, the Gold Star Highway property is in the water resource protection district, that one, if they. Um, eventually develop that, it will have to, uh, again, just meet certain standards. From a drainage requirement, like that's really the kind of the biggest one. There are some use limitations. Again, it's, it's all stuff that's in the zoning regulations. Um, a portion of Triton Square, the Old Sealy School is also in the water resource protection district. And they just had to, uh, work with it within the parameters of that from a drainage perspective.
All right. Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
Hi, thank you, Council Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so if, can we see the map again, please? Cause my questions really refer to the map. Um, and while that's coming up, um, I didn't realize that the last RFP went out, when the last RFP went out, that there was a potential buyer. Um, in that RFP, did it say the school building needed to remain? Was that a push?
I don't think so. You know, that is how much that, you know, those, outside of Grand Heights, our buildings don't really have historic value. You know, they're not necessarily attractive. So that is never, I don't believe that was a consideration then.
Oh, that was, that was never a requirement.
Okay.
Um, and most, most developers that have looked at the property, the prior RFP, but even. Even the contemporary viewing, most people, uh, are envisioning that they would remove that building.
Okay. I, I asked the question, I just remember with Colonel Ledger that it was kept, um, or that it was in the RFP to be kept. So with this map, um. I guess I'm confused with the water resource protection district. Is it a specific percentage of the property? Is it a per- specific? Section of the property? All of the property.
Yep.
Is covered under the water resource protection district, but it says in our packet that it requires a portion of the land area. To be left in its natural state.
Correct. Yeah. So within our zoning regulations, a portion of the land area, when you're looking at, uh, drainage calculations and how the site is used. Again, this is, um, the water resource protection district is an overlay zone. So it's. There's our, you know, the RM district, the residential multifamily district is, is the zoning district for the parcel. But the overlay zone of the water resource protection district, when you look at the town zoning map, a substantial portion of the town is in the water resource protection district. And some of the main things that we focus on within the water resource protection district are really what is stored on a site that there's not hazardous materials. Uh, if there are, uh, certain things stored on a site that there's, uh, you know, protection plans and how stuff is stored on a property. Really, when we're looking at, um, a lot of our commercial sites. But then, uh, again, focusing on drainage and being very precise about how drainage is calculated. The, the inputs for the modeling for drainage and that a portion of the property remain in its natural state. That is required within the zoning regulations, no matter what the council does. Um, there's also, you know, for, uh, an end use on the property. There's also a limitation on the amount of impervious coverage that can be utilized for the site. And, uh, you know, again, these are all things that. Larger picture, the council, you know, through the public hearing process will set, you know, hey, these are the things that we're generally looking for. You know, we've been hearing loud and clear for a couple of years that we want to see, uh, some type of park, open space. Uh, portion of this, uh, property that gets set aside and that's something, you know, we have some thoughts on the best way of doing that. Or some ideas of doing that because instead of the town, you know, paying for that, if we, you know, have been talking with the Parks and Rec Director. Um, as we're going through the tote process and as we're kind of making some amendments to the RFPs. If the council wants a certain size, you know, playground or park or some type of amenity. We can put that in the RFP and say developer, whoever is bidding on this, we want. You know, X size park with this type of equipment and you are gonna put it on there for us and then. Once you get your building permit and your CO, you're gonna give us the keys to the playground and then, you know, that piece is, you know. Kept by the town, but not something that we necessarily cut off in, um. Prior to, because then we would be the ones having to do it. So there might be, there's some creative ways of, of, of working through some of these, uh, these problems and. Uh, solutions that we're looking for.
And John, for the, sorry.
Go ahead.
For the required open space, um, I assume wooded area could, that could be wooded area for that. Does that have to be open, open?
No, I, I think there's a number of ways, uh, you know, I think the language is in its natural state. So, you know, we'd have to just again. Work through the, the zoning regulatory process. So it could be a portion of the woods. Um, yeah.
Um, thank you. You answered actually my second question in your explanation. I do, um, appreciate the fact that everybody realizes that we need a park space over here and. Um, I would love to have kind of a little bit more of an understanding of where that might be, what percentage of the land. Um, acreage wise at the hearing, um, if that is possible, but, um, thank you for making that a priority. Cause it's definitely been a priority for a lot of us. Thank you. And I yield the floor.
Council Pacina.
Um, as I'm looking at the map, the one you have presently on, on the screen, uh. To the west of this, uh, property is Navy housing. And the forested area in between Navy housing and the actual school is a really. Fine buffer between whatever is going to be built there and our warfighters' homes. Could we put something in the, um, RFP that would maintain, definitely maintain that? In that language?
We can certainly put buffer requirements. I don't think you want to say all trees though, because you don't want to run out of land to do a project. They want, you know, you want to keep it, be negotiated, but certainly.
Yeah. And, and again, our zoning requirements do, um, have some buffers and landscaping requirements. Also adjacent to this property, uh, there is some privately owned land, which is all forested, one of the.
I saw that. Yeah, that's a kind of, uh, landlord. Well, not landlord, but there's no access to it.
It, yeah, there, there might be some access at, uh, the. Yeah, the, the previous, um, preferred developer for this property actually had an option on some of that land. It was going to. Incorporate that into the development through trails and open space and that's something that we still could see in the future.
Okay, that'll, that'll be, that would be, uh, really wonderful, because, uh, if, uh, if our warfighters could, uh. Have trails and open space right behind their houses, it'll be a whole lot better than a factory.
Well, we wouldn't see a factory. Yeah. Again, it's not, it's not zoned light industrial. I would just.
Okay. I apologize. I, I misunderstood. I just, I just want to see some kind of a, some kind of a buffer there, and, uh.
Oh, certainly.
Concern for their, um, uh, not well-being, but their, uh, use and enjoyment of their property.
Yeah, certainly.
I'm good, thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. If you're looking at this property over to, I guess it's the bottom left-hand side, there looks like a building there and potentially a playground down there, or that uh, does anybody know if that is the pit playground down by Highland or Island Avenue?
I'm not sure what's there.
Can you scroll up some more?
Oh, upward?
Nope, the other one.
Oh, that's the Navy daycare.
It's a daycare, so there's like a playground there?
Green roof and the white roof of the, and the, yeah, there's another, like a brown roof in there. That's the.
Oh, you mean down here?
Buildings of the Navy daycare and in between them are their playgrounds.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Counsel Pacino, as I've used the daycare, it, it's all fenced in. So it's only accessible if you're, uh, uh, you know, getting services at facility.
Yeah.
It's not open, yeah, it's not accessible, it's all fenced in.
Thank you. Any more questions from anybody? Alright, um, so, I heard some comments here about the playground. We also have a referral into the Parks and Rec awaiting, um, their response on where locations, the best locations in District Four for a playground.
Madam Mayor, point of order, uh, could we stop sharing the screen?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, sorry about that, Madam Mayor.
No, it's fine, um. Where we had asked Parks and Rec as the council to, um, come back to us and talk to us about where the best locations for parks should be in District Four. And while we may want one, we're here, I don't know. I don't know, I'm not Parks and Rec to analyze the whole district and figure out where the best locations would be. And I'm, my thought process is also if we could sell the property at four, at five point four million dollars, we could also use that funding to purchase land as well. So I think our options are, should be open at this moment and we should also try and ask Parks and Rec to come back with recommendations also in what they think of this property. Um, in relation to the surrounding neighborhoods and if this is the best spot, because we could also buy other property that we could put parks in as well, and I don't know what their recommendation is going to be. Um, so I'm gonna try and keep an open mind on that part, um. But I also am in favor of moving forward. Um, I didn't get a full response from everybody on their exact feelings from this, um. So I don't know how, where the consensus is. Um. Alright.
Don't know why my screen keeps doing that, but it does keep doing that.
Well, it's something special.
Updated version of Zoom.
Counsel Parker, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, and consensus? I think we should move it forward.
Counsel Bornon?
Um, yeah, so in response to the, like, maybe another spot, I think, you know, again, we'll, we'll talk about this at a later date. But I kind of agree with the, uh, town staff and it's something that, um, I had brought up several years ago when looking at, in a different manner, where I saw other towns that were coming in building and they were like, um, willing to donate back to the town ten thousand for a new football field or, you know, some of these, um, developers that are coming in into a lot of other towns, they're willing, to them, five, six, eight, ten thousand dollars is to get a piece of property in a, in a prime location. They're willing to give back and do something for the town, so I would hate to lose out on the opportunity for a small parcel there, which is not going to take away really from that property. To have, if you look at the buildings and the housing, military housing, having the accessibility for folks to walk from there in over to this park, um, that could be fully funded by another developer with us, not having to purchase any land and not having to purchase the equipment to build it and all of that, so. And I would hate to delay Parks and Rec's idea because, again, we know that there was a park over here at one time because there was a school there. So, um, my hope is to put something right in that spot because it, it was a familiar place that a lot of people used. And I do think we need to start making these RFPs more robust and really start asking more, um, because again, a lot of these folks, um, will, um, from what I'm seeing in different towns, when they're purchasing land and a lot of them want to partner and, and put their name on something where, you know, um, they're willing to add, uh, I, I saw one town where they added a fountain at one of the parks because they were fundraising for that and they just want to give back, uh, to the community. Um, so there's ways in which we can write these RFPs to enhance the welfare and well-being of our town, so that, that's my hope, but obviously, I want to move forward, see where it goes. But I do think that area, that immediate area, knowing the area, is lacking. Uh, Mary Morrison across the street and down on Tollgate, um, is an older school building and the playground is getting old over there. This one was a highlight at one point, it's, you know, not very usable anymore. Um, and there's nothing in walking distance. We sold the other building across the way where the, where it used to be the Parks and Rec building, uh, there's no playground there anymore. So we definitely need something over here, so, but again, let's get moving and, uh, but I do like the idea of coming up with a plan to coordinate and really sell ourselves to these developers as a need. Thank you.
And, uh, I, touching base, I, I do think, uh, we would want to certainly solicit input from the Parks and Rec Commission, you know, and you know, obviously Mark's been involved, but we would want, yeah, them to weigh in also.
Yep.
Write in any comments?
Counsel Pacino?
Um, I'd like to, uh, agree with Mayor, um, Franco about, um, cutting a chunk of, of, of five million plus property for a park, when we could probably get um, a, a less expensive piece of land somewhere else with that very same money or, um, do something of that nature. And, um, and I, I hate to disagree with another counselor, but I don't think the Navy and our warfighters need a park there. The Navy takes care of our warfighters, they have parks all over housing. They don't need us to provide one for them. They have them. So, w- with that said, I don't think we need to be putting a park in there. Sell it as is, we'll find someplace else for a park there, there's plenty of places around there and we'll see what Parks and Rec comes up with. That's my piece.
And I think part of the point of the public, uh, hearing is to, you know, get some upfront feedback from neighbors and residents and what they'd like to see there, that might help guide some things once we hear that.
Anybody else want to chime in on, uh, which direction they would like to go on this? Counsel Gaiasky, would you like to just?
Yep, moving forward.
We have a thumbs up from Counsel Jones numerous times now. Um, Counsel Russ, are you in favor?
Absolutely, want to move forward, let's get this property sold.
And I've heard yes from Pacino. Okay, I think we have a consensus to move forward as well as my, for myself, so thank you very much and we can get into, um, very good debates on parks in that section of town, because we're all sort of in favor of it from what I'm hearing, so it's just, what's the best location and how do we do it, so? I think there's many options going to be on our table and, um, which is a very good thing, I think, so we can deal with that in the future.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do we have another?
No.
We have another.
Motion by Board one? Was it seconded by Parker? Or Russ, I'm sorry?
Russ.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we are out of the Town Council Committee Hall, we're gonna meeting and we will now start the Town Council's, uh, special meeting agenda for February thirteenth. Um, roll call, all are present except for Counsel McBride and Counsel Merritt. Um, first item on our agenda is two zero two four dash one three nine dash one, C T D Pura. I'll ask Counsel Parker, would you like to read that, uh, motion?
Yes, ma'am, I, am I reading just the result?
It's your project.
Resolution authorizing the town manager or his designated to seek grant funding from the Connecticut Department of Edu- Energy and Ma- Environmental Protection D and Public Utilities Regulatory Authorities Public Education and Governmental Programming and Education Technology Investment Account to replace, upgrade and enhance GMTV studio and remote equipment. Be it resolved or resolved that the, the Grotton Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager or is there's need to seek grant funding for the amount of forty-four thousand ninety-five dollars from the Public Education and Governmental Programming and Education Technology hmm, investment account which will allow Grotton Municipal Television, replace, upgrade and enhance studio and remote equipment for Grotton Government, access programming and refer the item to the RTM per rule six point five point three, I so move.
Second, Board one? Yeah, second, um, motion by Parker, so we're gonna by Board one. Any comments? We had full discussion in Cow, which we just came out of, so. We're good? Okay, we're gonna vote on this and we will go once again.
On, aye?
Counsel Gaiasky?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Russ?
Aye.
Counsel Franco, I'll pass this seven to zero two zero. Up next is the two zero two four dash eight nine dash one, is the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Counsel Gaiasky, would you please read that one?
Sure, Mayor. Resolution authorizing application for an emergency management performance grant. Be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes Town Manager John Bird to act on behalf of the Town of Grotton, including executing any and all documents and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program to accept the grant in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars and refer to the and to refer the item to the RTM per, per rule six point five three, so.
Second, Court.
Parker.
By Gaiasky, second by Parker? Any conversation? We just had full conversation in Cow, so we will go into voting.
Board one, aye?
Counsel Gaiasky?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Parker?
Aye.
Counsel Pacino?
Aye.
Counsel Russ?
Aye.
I am also an aye, that passes seven to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Again.
Is that Pacino?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? I mean, opposed, extension. That passes seven to zero to zero, we are adjourning at nine twenty PM.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.